Welcome to the Audio Conferencing Center. Please enter a conference ID followed by pound. You are now joining.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. It's good to have everybody with us today. We have quite a bit of work to do, Commissioners, and a lot of interesting discussions, and we're looking forward to that. Two options are available for citizens who wish to speak during the public session, and we will have this session today. The first option is citizens who are interested in participating in the public session, call this number. You can write it down, and I'll repeat it twice. The number is 336-422-1200. That's where those of you who are going to call in and participate in the public session. The telephone number is 336-422-1200. You'll be put on hold until the public session begins. Option two, for those who are not going to call in, you are attending in person today. Please fill out a speaker card. They're located in the lobby, in the foyer, in the credenza, and the card should be filled out and given to the clerk for the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, Ashley Sloop, who is to my far right. And please do so now if you'd like to speak during the public session, and she will be prepared to take that card that you do fill out. That way, we'll get folks on live and in living color, and we'll have those who called in on the telephone. We'll begin our meeting today with an invocation from Pastor John White from Freedom Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led today by Vice Chairman Don Martin. Please stand if you can. Pastor White, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, I thank you for this board, and God, I thank you for our community. Lord, I pray that you'll give wisdom today. I pray in every item that comes up, I pray you'll give discernment and wisdom. And Father, we thank you for each Commissioner, and we thank you to be living in the country we live in. I thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. And God, I pray you would help us to be good stewards of what you have given us. I pray you'll bless this meeting today. Again, watch over every part of it, and may all of it be done to honor and glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, what has become a regular practice this year is the opportunity to introduce the Director of the Forsyth County Public Health Office, Joshua Swift, to give us a live report on the current status with COVID-19. Mr. Swift.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will pull up the presentation, or I will attempt to pull up the presentation.
Good to have you with us in person today.
Yes, good to be here. Okay, great. So, an update as far as today, 6:24. We've had 165 cases in the last 14 days, and our average cases per day of COVID-19 in Forsyth County is 12. So far, since the beginning of the pandemic, we've had 420 deaths in Forsyth County. This next slide is our vaccine distribution across Forsyth County. You can see the middle column is the percent of Forsyth County population partially vaccinated. The right column is the percent of the population that's fully vaccinated. I won't go through each line, but you can see the breakdown by race at the top, and then you can see the breakdown by age. You can see that overall, 47% of the population is at least partially vaccinated, 44% is fully vaccinated. And draw your attention on the left, that 58% of adults in Forsyth County are partially vaccinated compared to the state rate of 55%. So, we are doing better than the state, but if you look at this zoom out from a national level, North Carolina is 36th in the nation for vaccine. So, we, our state as a whole is not doing as well. You know, we're really pushing. Our goal is 70% of our population to be partially vaccinated. That was the President's goal, to have that by July 4th. We saw some states reach that, North Carolina and Forsyth County won't reach that by July 4th. Our internal metric and goal for the Health Department is to try to push that we can reach that goal, working with our partners, Navant and Baptist and other providers, by the end of the summer. That's going to be a stretch, but we're hoping that the pace will increase. We've had not much of an increase due to the vaccine lottery that's come out. We're also seeing other counties in the state offering gift cards. 35, 38 actually counties were chosen to expand that. We weren't on that list. We're going to be pushing the state, and I would encourage Commissioners, please push the state to try to have us to be one of those counties in the future rollouts for the vaccine uptake with the gift cards. So, we're trying and trying, offering the vaccine, and you'll see that in just a moment, some of our offerings. The vaccine availability, we have Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson doses that are available. People can come to the Health Department anytime our clinics are open. You can make an appointment online, you can call, or you can just walk up. And our outreach, these are just some examples of some of the outreach events, and these are constantly being adjusted and added to. We have an event today at the Faith Action ID Drive on Shetland Drive. We'll be at Aperture Theater this Saturday. Next week, we'll be in Kernersville at the Salvation Army, along with Cook's Flea Market. The weekend of the 4th, we'll be there on the July 3rd. We had a great event a few weeks ago out there, had good participation compared to our other outreach events. We'll be at Triad Park on the 4th. And in addition to this, we're also working with industries and trying to offer the vaccine to their employees. Obviously, we don't make those public because those are not public events, they're just for employees, so we're doing that as well, to try to make the vaccine more available. This, my last slide was just to mention something that we're keeping our eye on and trying to look at scenarios for the future, especially for the fall, is trying to anticipate the Delta variant. We expect in five to six weeks, this will be the majority of new cases in the United States. Currently, it's 8% to 10% of cases across the U.S. We don't have data on Forsyth County number because the sequencing is so few, so few cases are sequenced. We don't have reliable information for just inside the county, but we know across the nation, it's 8% to 10%. We know it's more transmissible, and right now, it's really too early to tell whether this one will lead to more hospitalizations as compared to other variants. So, be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Swift? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question, but I am so disappointed to hear that we didn't receive any of the gift cards when 38 other counties did, and I think Guilford received a large amount. I think that we should all do our homework this weekend and call all our representatives and share our disappointment with them. And Ted, I'd suggest that you call the Governor.
I got the, an audience reaction there, Ted. I have two, go ahead.
One question, please.
Yes, sir. Right ahead.
First, thank you for the report. It's always detailed. Have you had any success with a high school still participating in this outreach to vaccinate the students?
Yes, a few weeks ago, as soon as the 12 to 15 year age bracket came open with Pfizer, we planned two events, actually four events. We went to two middle schools, Northwest Middle and Mineral Springs Middle, and then we went to Carver and Parkland High Schools. Those four events, we had around 650 people get vaccinated at those events. Now, we did those at the end of the school day, so for the students, but we also had it open in the afternoon where the public could come as well. And we noticed some parents bringing their students from other schools. We are talking with the school system now to offer vaccine because of their summer enrichment programs. It's very robust, the programs that they have, especially this summer. We're trying to offer a vaccine at those, some of those locations. Also, every year with school starting, there's 30 days for students to get their vaccinations. And unfortunately, there's a lot of children that don't have their vaccinations up to date, and they have to be excluded from school. So, we have a zero exclusion policy that this county, with the Health Department and the School Health Advisory Council and the school system, has worked on for years, and we're going to be offering not only the COVID vaccine, but offering those other vaccinations as well.
Thank you very much.
It's a long-winded answer, but.
Commissioner Martin?
Two quick questions. One, is the expected date for the vaccine for the younger children still like October, that whatever it is, birth to 12 or 6 to 12 or whatever it is?
It looks like it will be, Commissioner Martin, for 2 to 11-year-olds, and that could possibly be September or October.
And that would really help with school issues with younger kids. And I guess the second question was, if we had, if we sort of projected that population forward some percentage, say 40, 50% of them, what, I'm just kind of curious how that moves our total number of vaccinations. It seems to be we really ought to focus on the young people that are just now have become eligible, and really focus on this new group that's coming up, sort of planning for it, because clearly, vaccine's been available for adults and for those elders for a long time. And I appreciate you offering all these locations and at events and on days that hopefully people will participate. But, you know, those, the four schools getting 650 is a pretty good, pretty good number, and maybe that's maybe worthwhile to look at some of the other high schools and middle schools when schools resume. Awful lot of young kids in the, in the summer programs, and I think there, you know, a good many middle schoolers and a few high school. But, yeah, I appreciate all those, that work. I did have, sorry, third question, and it is on the, this variant, the D variant. Any research, I remember the UK variant that the previous vaccinations seem to be has been good for. How is this D variant on the, for people that have the Pfizer Moderna that are already vaccinated?
It's, from what we're seeing early on, it's working, but we do have to tell people that there are breakthroughs. You've heard of the breakthrough where some, you know, it's 95% effective, so that means there's a 4% to 5% that will get it. But what we're seeing here, and we're looking at the data, is yes, you could get, still could get COVID, but hospitalizations and deaths, that's not occurring among people that are vaccinated.
Right.
Other things that we're trying to push, and we're trying to rebrand this, is if you've had the vaccine and then you're around someone that's positive, you don't have to isolate or quarantine. You can go see family members in the hospital. So, there's things, looking at other ways to incentivize or show the worth of the vaccine.
I appreciate the work you've done on it, and still continue to do it.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I did visit the Forsyth County Public Health Department today and saw a life-size cutout of Richard Linville at the front of the door, which made me feel comfortable when I walked in. And I think from, from Richard's point of view, I think that's a good deal, probably get more people to get vaccinations. Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I do want this board to know that I have seen Joshua in his jeans and in his sneakers in this community at most events. I mean, he has worked tremendously hard in our marginalized communities, and I have to, you know, give you accolades today for that, Joshua. I sincerely appreciate you, again, always listening to us and just being there and caring. So, I wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate the support of the Commissioners. I appreciate the support of Dudley, Chantel, County Management, and the staff that have been working hard 15 months now. But, yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation to recognize the upcoming retirement of Dan Dockery, who is the Chief Building Official for Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Vice Chairman Don Martin is going down to take care of that. And while you're going down, I would like to play a song featuring Dan Dockery. He's written the music and the words. See if we can get this here, Dan, as you come up. If we can't, I'll find it while you're, while you're working. You know, when you're, when you're trying to get it, get it done, and you think you know what you're doing, you find out your limitations right quick. It does, I can tell you, the picture of you here is really nice, and you have a khaki hat on, like a baseball hat, an old work shirt, and a guitar around your neck. The name of the song is.
County Manager's coming over to help you out.
Oh, here he comes. Come on. Hit that.
Yeah, we're good.
That's what, this is what the county manager does. Here he goes.
All right. Say that.
Sure, translate into which language?
Oh, English. You're going to sing, not Japanese.
Okay. What would you like to translate?
This is terrible.
In Japanese. This is terrible.
No, no, we don't want Japanese. Sure glad it's happening to you, Dudley, rather than me. Oh, you know, I thought.
Absolutely. I don't know why it's not doing it.
Well, they don't know who you are, apparently. We got to get them acquainted.
Here we go.
Oh, boy. Oh, I hear the sound. Now, let's turn this up a little bit. Oh, boy. It's a love song, Dan.
You can get this on Reverb Nation, so everybody can have access to it. We'll get on with business.
Wait a minute, we're just not getting to the part where he puts his finger in her coffee.
And I like it because it's about that, about that look in, in somebody's eye when that first cup of coffee. When you figure out how a girl likes a cup of coffee in the morning, that's what, that's what's really important.
I hope she never lets you go either, Don. Wait a minute. I gotta, I gotta tell you, Dan. Now, Dan, let me tell you something. You're off your knees and on your feet, and Don is going to read, read a proclamation for us.
It's a real pleasure to read this proclamation, recognizing the accomplishments of Daniel Dockery, whom I'll refer to as Dan after this. But Daniel Dockery of the, on the occasion of his retirement as Chief Building Official for Winston-Salem Forsyth County. Whereas Dan Dockery began his career in the City-County Planning Department Services, Planning and Development Services Department on November 5th, 2001, and has ably served the citizens of Forsyth County, North Carolina, for over 20 years. Whereas Daniel Dockery has held many positions within the City-County Planning and Development Services Department, including Building Inspector from 2001 to 2004, Assistant Inspections Director from 2004 to 2013, and Chief Building Official from 2013 to 2021, all with distinction. Whereas Daniel Dockery worked tirelessly to build strong partnerships with the Home Builders' Association and Commercial Realtors Association, and in 2008, developed a continuing education program focusing on the building code and local ordinances, and we also, and was also instrumental in leading the change of use, the change of use task force. Whereas Dan Dockery was an active member in construction-related organizations, serving on the Greater Winston-Salem Inc. Construction Industry Council, along with the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association, including service as president from 2014, 2015. Whereas Daniel Dockery was recognized by the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association as Building Inspector of the Year in 2013, with the entire Winston-Salem Forsyth County inspections team being awarded the President's Choice Award in 2014. Excuse me, Dan. And whereas Dan Dockery played a critical role in the City-County Planning and Development Services Team, receiving the 2018 Innovations in Code Excellence Award from the International Code Council for working to create a process that makes it easier to repurpose older buildings. Whereas Dan Dockery is academically accomplished, holds a Bachelor's in Business and Economics from High Point University, as well as a Master's in Public Administration from High Point University. Whereas Dan Dockery's outstanding work within the community over the past 20 years has contributed significantly to fostering a significantly to fostering a safe, vibrant, and appealing built environment, and has ultimately helped to make Winston-Salem-Forsyth County a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore be it resolved that Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize the exemplary service and accomplishments of Dan Dockery and thank him for his outstanding and distinguished service to the state of North Carolina and the citizens of Forsyth County. I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Dan.
I have one thing that he would not be aware is coming. This actually is a confidential piece of information that came from a previous employee evaluation. However, it is something that he wrote. So it is on his evaluation, there's an opportunity for the employees, general comments on his evaluation. And I'd like to read this particular, one comment, it's a couple sentences here, from a previous evaluation. He says, "People grin and look at me sideways when they ask about my job. My answer is that I'm the luckiest person in the world every day. I go to work with an opportunity to help someone grow, grow their business, get better at what they do, make what they do more efficient, effective, or just more enjoyable. And I work with a group of people whose skills constantly amaze me. Most of the time, I truly don't know who's learning the most, me or them, but it doesn't matter, there's plenty of room for all of us. Do your business honestly and fairly, work hard for what you believe in, and make sure you can shake hands when it's over. And anything, and any time, excuse me, and any time possible, leave something on the table. One of you will need it in the future, and it will be there waiting for you. Thanks for the opportunity to serve the city of Winston-Salem, County Forsyth, and the state of North Carolina. Have a great day, and don't forget to take a kid fishing."
That's great. Now, we wanted you to have a size can of cartons with Richard's and a couple notes from the county manager.
That is...
Gotta put that on. Gotta put that on.
I know how to work one of these.
And you can make a singing career. The mic's yours.
I will make more music in the future. Dudley will tell you, Commissioner, I mean, Manager Watts will tell you, when he asked me to come over, I don't like these things. My wife says I have an awful time taking compliments, and she's right. It would have been horribly ingracious or ungracious, you'll have to tell me which the proper word is, to have refused this. I wanna let you know that I have never in 20 years called a member of the county commissioners or county manager and asked for help, that I didn't get it. I've never called and asked for support, either directly or through some of the groups that we work with, the Commercial Builders, Home Builders Association, the Northwest Institute for Architects, that I did not get help, and I appreciate it. And I also wanna say that the thanks is wonderful, and I am so grateful, actually, not just for the recognition, but again, for the opportunity. It has been a wonderful 20 years. I've got a sign on the inside of my door, and it says, "Remember, you don't just go out and make inspections, people, you go out and make a difference. This is our hometown, and that's what we try to do." And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving me the opportunity for 20 years to work on behalf of Winston-Salem-Forsyth County citizens. I truly, truly thank you. I'm the luckiest man in the world. And that's all I've got to say except for one thing. My replacement has been named, and he is here with me.
Has he sang?
And I want you to welcome Mr. Trace Phillips. Tracey, will you stand?
Trace, do you play the guitar?
He's younger than I am, he's smarter than I am, and I'm sure that he'll get as much support, and y'all show him just as much love as you have made. I do, I appreciate y'all from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
Thanks for everything. The second item on the agenda today is approval of minutes for the meetings of June 3rd, 7th, June 10th, 2021. Discussion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Alamein.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the public session. We'll take telephone calls, and we're going to take people from the audience right now. And I'll ask the clerk to the commissioners, Ashley Sloop, do we have anyone for the public session on the phone?
Mr. Chairman, we have four callers and one speaker in person.
You can go with each one, anyone, the show is yours from here on out.
Okay. We're gonna start with the citizen who is here in person. His name is Philip Carter. Will you please come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Philip Carter, 1148 East 5th Street. Good evening, Mr. Chair, distinguished county commissioners. As you all know, we are living in a time where there are, there is an affordable housing crisis. And that crisis is especially pertinent as it relates to our seniors. According to Marla Newman, who is the Community Director of the City of Winston-Salem, by the year 2027, we will need 14,633 units of housing, of which 62% of those housings will be needed for seniors between the ages of 62 and 85. I am here today, not as an advocate for housing justice now, but as the precinct chair of Precinct 404, my Lord Jordan Library, asking you all to consider the bid that is being brought before you by Harland Homes in providing housing there. I think it would be a community that would allow seniors to age in place, but age gracefully, and to be supported by the many amenities that is around it, such as downtown Winston, drugstores, food stores, and other amenities. So again, I ask you, I urge you, I plead with you, to please consider their bid to provide housing on that lot on the corner of Filth and Hiling. I'd also like to take this time to prematurely thank you all for appointing me or reappointing me to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, on which I so dearly love serving on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carter. Ashley Sloop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to go to the phone calls now.
Available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
What is your name?
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, my name, hi, I'm Emily Barnes.
Thank you, Emily. What is your address?
4780 Ader Drive, Winston-Salem 27105.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Thank you.
You may begin.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I live in the 27105 zip code. I'm calling with Triad Abolition Project and Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition. In a Facebook post by Forsyth County Sheriff's Office yesterday afternoon, Mr. Kimbrough called out Triad Abolition Project directly and said calls to defund the police are divisive. We'll always stand up and push back against those who divide us, he says. But calls to defund the police are neither divisive nor demoralizing to me.
Ma'am, will you turn the volume off on your device?
Yes. In this video, Kimbrough connects Triad Abolition Project to a recording of dispatch calls from upset community members. However, the only calls made by cats to our county representatives are like this one, and over 20 others over the course of the past fiscal year. It seems like Kimbrough is trying to make cats the face of defunding the police because it's easier than addressing real issues. I'm a member of Triad Abolition Project, but first and foremost, I'm an individual member of this community who's coming to you with real issues. We came together with a shared purpose, to help our communities heal and protect each other from harm. And this includes our incarcerated siblings who deserve an inalienable human right, will not stand to be discriminated against for being divisive because that's not who we are. I shouldn't have to point out that policing is divisive as it more heavily surveils black and COC neighborhoods and solidifies their borders, as it discriminates without knowing or taking into account the people that it harms. It's divisive because where we have to argue to cut corners to fund community initiatives, Bobby Kimbrough has the county board of commissioners in his pocket. Per public relations, Don Martin brought up in a recent county budget meeting that he received emails about local press not getting press releases before FCSO posted to Facebook. Bobby Kimbrough responded to this by saying it wasn't necessary, and if I'm putting out accurate information, there's no need for it to be in the paper. I shouldn't have to say that a government agency has no right to control what is released to the public. Funneling more money into FCSO PR department is not the solution to the problem of the relationship to the community, being better at the relationship is. I should add that the video posted by Kimbrough on Facebook was harmful and continues to exist and spread hatred of ideas and concepts which our government should not actively work to suppress.
You have 30 seconds.
This is using social media as a platform to build silos of constituents to support BK's own agenda, not what the community wants. When BK says he wants a bigger budget for social media and community relationships, this is what he means, that and relationships with local businesses, he can have access to their cameras. The way county officials communicate with community organizations sucks a lot about the way they build community relations. The board of commissioners' response is to better fund more cops and police social media instead of building from the things that the community says it needs.
Ma'am, your time is up.
My favorite to them, to FCSO over crisis police to fund them and refund our communities. I urge board members to be unbiased when you listen to public comments, and remember that we're not the enemy.
Your time is up.
The residents of the community. Thank you.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Katie Morowski, and I live at 27103 zip code, 701 Magnolia Street. And I am calling with Triad Abolition Project and the Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition. During the, or throughout the fiscal year 2022 budget process, we have been shown clearly where the city and county priorities lie. Commissioners continue to maintain funding the sheriff's department while admitting to its overreach, expanding surveillance, pushing for metro policing, and allowing Bobby Kimbrough, the Forsyth County Sheriff, to be casually referred to as the High Sheriff. Our county commissioners have called the sheriff out for his methods and behaviors, and the public deserves to be aware of this. The public also deserves to be aware that in today's meeting, Agenda Item 5 is a request for an additional $65,000 for temporary Forsyth County Sheriff's Office employees due to a rising gun permit and concealed carry permit request in the midst of propaganda from Sheriff Kimbrough saying that he is actively addressing local gun violence. So obviously, that's hypocrisy. The public also deserves to know that today's Agenda Item Number 8 is a request from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office for $88,000 in construction design on public safety upset projects, to additionally cover over $1 million, which was not overtly advertised in the budget workshop. It's also troubling that the construction company, Davie Construction Company, located in Davie County, is an all-white management, has an all-white management and employees receiving over $1 million of Forsyth County, excuse me, taxpayer dollars. Rather than spend money on programs for the community, it has been clear that the mission is defund efforts to silence community members for calling for the defunding of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office and convincing the public that they are in need of more money. We know that if the crime rates that are used to incite fear into our community included the crimes committed by the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office and Winston-Salem Police Department, the public would have a different understanding of what those numbers truly mean. Excluding crimes committed by deputies and officers heavily skews these numbers and our understanding of them, and that's intentional. In addition, spokesperson of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, Christina Howell, deleted comments from the Facebook page that criticized, that only criticized Sheriff Bobby Kimbrough, but she does nothing to respond to racist, horrible, ugly comments that are regularly represented on that Facebook page where the majority, if not all, the FCSO media is shared.
You have 30 seconds.
During the year's, during the year's budget process, we've run that members of the community, the members of media and sport have been voicing concerns regarding the Forsyth County Sheriff's overreach, especially regarding their aggressive public relations efforts. So without collective change, there's no change possible, commissioners. We will continue to call and effort to defund the business that oppressed our most vulnerable siblings, and call out county officials to attempt to change the narrative back to status quo that has kept this community safe. Thanks.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Cash.
Stacy, what is your address?
508 Southwest View Drive.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
My name is Stacy, and I live in the 27103 zip code. I'm calling with Triad Abolition Project and the Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition. We say budgets are moral documents, and discussions surrounding budgets have been very revealing. This board engaged in eye-opening dialogue throughout the fiscal year 2022 budget discussion, especially regarding the cost of education in Forsyth County. The fiscal year 2022 SRO budget includes an increase of $358,145, in addition to the annual cost of $2,224,935 for 13 new SROs. And this cost is covered by Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Schools. Schools are paying for these officers, which includes 37 total. This is money that could be going towards new technology, school nurses, and counselors. The SRO program was in the process of transferring the responsibility from the WSPD to the FCSO. It was in the phase one of this process in March of 2020, when the pandemic shut everything down. WSPD was having difficult times maintaining these positions, and so the solution was to increase salaries and shift the responsibility from the city to the county. Now the FCSO is requesting to enter into Phase 2 and 3 of this transition process simultaneously in order to reach their goals due to the delays of the pandemic. Consider the state of mind of our students right now in the wake of this pandemic. I want you to ask yourselves if it is truly appropriate to assume that they need more surveillance through increased law enforcement presence, or additional school counselors to help them manage their expenses from last year and the half. It seems as if this board is accustomed to making connections between the lack of community services and the increase in crime, when neglecting to increase the needs for mental health services in our schools. Disparities that are already present in Winston-Salem-Forsyth County schools are intensified in this time. Families have experienced massive income loss and food, housing insecurity. All of this has impacted the mental well-being of our students. These kids are not criminals, and it is disturbing to hear the language that is thrown around by members of this board that make major decisions for the future of this county and its future leaders. In March, there was even mention of an unexpected return to normal for the 2021-2020 school year of the resolution, Agenda Item 10. Our school will be returning, our children will be returning to the school after a highly traumatic year with multiple transitions, and now all of them are equipped with proper resources.
You have 30 seconds.
School counselors are what we should be pushing into schools at high speed in the wake of this pandemic, not SRO. Help kids or give intervention from an SRO. Why are we denying children increased counselors and waiting for them to break under this pressure? They need support, especially after a year lockdown with so many transitions and adjustments. They don't need to be targeted by the police in school or police recruitment efforts. I'll just give my time.
Mr. Chairman, we have one caller.
All right.
You are now available. You are now available. Thank you.
Please turn the volume off your, on your device. Please cut it down. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. This session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, this is Nia. I live in the 27103 zip code. I'm calling with Tribe Abolition Project and Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition.
I'm going to stop right here. I did not catch your name or your address. I'm sorry.
This is Nia. I live at 1325 Champion Place Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27103.
Okay, Nia, what is your last name?
Sadler.
Thank you, Nia. You will be given three minutes to speak, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Before I get started, I'd like to comment about the audio during the meeting right now. The quality is subpar, and the audio is cutting out during the previous person's comment. So that took up time from their comment. Anyway, here we go. In a recent budget workshop, Sheriff Bobby Kimbrough emphasized that he wants more partnerships with the Real-Time Intelligence Center, which needs more access to community cameras like Quality Mart and Housing Authority. He believes that he can prevent crime by expanding his access to existing cameras in our community. There is no evidence to support camera surveillance as a form of crime prevention, only as an aid for prosecution. Kimbrough even said that he used the threat of revoking police services to gain access to housing's already cameras. He said, "If you expect me to put resources in your area, you have to give me access to your cameras. I shouldn't have to ask you for this. If I have men and women working in your area, I should have access to this." During the budget workshop as well, Bobby Kimbrough stated that men and women are dying while he waits to get access to camera footage. He uses this as a boost so he can buy for complete control over WSPD's RTIT cameras, and ultimately to be the High Sheriff in a metro policing system. You don't need him to have High Sheriff and metro policing powers in Winston-Salem. The purpose of having their departments separate is, I thought, to incentivize dialogue between departments. This is alarming as the police control so much in this city already. It's questionable when county commissioners freely and openly endorse anything Kimbrough says. It's further questionable when we witness commissioners scrutinize community agencies like education or community advocacy work while not holding the Sheriff's Office accountable. An example of that intense and inappropriate scrutiny we witnessed during another budget workshop was berating, was the berating behavior of Commissioner Don Martin when the WSFC Finance Representative, Andrea Gillis, a formerly school system budget operator in Mecklenburg, which is the largest county in North Carolina, presented the school budget. Conversely, the only level of scrutiny we witnessed from county commissioners was Commissioner McDaniel requesting in detail of the FCSO media budget, which has yet to be accessibly produced.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
And so the budget was approved unanimously. Thank you, without this information. Again, the audio in-house is irreprehensible. Please throw money at that. So defund FCSO and refund the community in that audio. I give my time.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any other callers.
Good job. Thank you, Ashley. County Manager Dudley Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. So a little bit different day today. We have the items for the formal meeting. We do have two presentations that we just chose to tag on at the end of the meeting, and we do have a closed session item. We do not have a briefing today as we will introduce our first items, items for the first time for the end-of-July meeting on July 15th. So anyway, we sort of collapsed all this into the formal meeting. I say that, Mr. Chairman, because one of the presentations has a number of folks here that are here to present, and just out of courtesy to them, I was going to move that up to the first part of the meeting if that's satisfactory to board members. Okay, very good. All right, well, let me, first of all, introduce Kirby Robinson to come up, really just to put the presentation from Holland Homes into context with the board action that has been already discussed, and then we'll introduce Mr. Hines, who's Chair of the Holland Homes Board of Directors, to make a presentation.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Just a quick reminder, this is our second presentation on the offers the board received to purchase the 1.3 acres of county-owned property located on Highland Avenue. You'll recall last week, we had a presentation from United Missionary, or I apologize, UMMC Baptist Church, right? I apologize. I should have had that in front of me. And I do, United Metropolitan Missionary Baptist Church, too much coffee for the presentation. I apologize. They presented last week. Today, we have GW Holland Housing Corporation here with us, which is our second offerer on the property. Their intended use, as proposed in their offer, was to use the land to construct affordable housing for the senior and military veteran population. They are a registered North Carolina nonprofit corporation, and their proposed purchase price is $100,000. So just wanted to recap the offers. Again, this is our last presentation. It's our last offer to review. In terms of next steps for the board, there are a couple of options you can consider. You've received two offers. You can choose to advertise one of those offers for upset bid. And again, you have complete discretion over this process. You can, or you can choose to do nothing with those offers. It's up to the board. You can reject them and leave the property as is, or continue to accept additional offers. So again, the board has complete discretion over the process, and this is our second offer to consider. So again, I appreciate the board's time. With that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Hines. He is the Director of the GW Holland Housing Corporation, and he is going to review their offer and introduce his folks. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First of all, let me thank you for your time that you've given us. I know you're busy, and I hope it's proper if I introduce the people that accompanied me.
Yes, sir.
We have Mr. Mike Jamison, who's President of Multifamily, that's a management company for housing. We have Ms. Barbara Doster, who's a site manager, and we have attorney Jasper Brown, who's spent 40 years with the federal government in labor. I got the email from your Mr. Robinson, and he indicated three things that I picked out of the email. One is, he said he wanted a short presentation, so we're going to try to be brief. I didn't even prepare any graphics or anything. Secondly, he said he wanted us to review our offer, and third, to just reiterate what our intention was. As most of you know, we currently manage 114 units here in the city. We've had a long-term relationship with HUD. This goes back to the mid-1970s. We have 114 units that are equally divided between Highland Avenue and File Street. We keep a waiting list at all times over the last five years we've had a waiting list. That's a sure sign that we need additional housing, and that's what we plan to do, if you're so kind as to award us this site. We've not had any problems. Going back to 2012, we rehoused the entire 114 units, put in new flooring, redid the walls, new appliances, about a $5 million project. We have not had any problems. I think it's ideal for seniors because it's single-story, and they love that. Now, we realize that today, we can't do single-story. We just don't have that kind of land available. We've been looking for land for about three years. We looked all over the city. We're concerned about where we would locate seniors. We wanted to be a place where I would put my loved one, or you would put your loved one. And so we looked around and looked around, and lo and behold, the county had the best piece of property in town for our intentions. We have never wavered in terms of what we plan to do. We still committed to housing for seniors and veterans. So that's our objective. I have some pamphlets. I think most of the board members have seen this already, but it's a layout of our current holding that we have. If anybody's interested, I'd be glad to give you a copy. But we just really think it would be a good thing for East Winston. It would be a good thing for the county commissioners. Be a good thing for First Baptist Church that I'm affiliated with. I can't think of any losers if you would support us in this endeavor. Do you have any questions for me, sir?
Questions or comments for Mr. Hines?
I have one. Mr. Hines, you know, this is the options that Mr. Kirby just reviewed, one of which is to, this board could consider, this is an upset bid process, which is pretty typical. We don't have to, but in a lot of property we've sold, we do re-advertize for an upset bid. If we were to do that, I guess what I want to know is, your $100,000 is your final offer?
What about the $100,000?
Is that your final offer? If we do an upset bid, are you going to bid again?
Well, let me, let me just talk about that a little bit. We were under the impression that you needed an opening bid, and that it would be left open for upset. And that's all I know about the process. So it opened, and we did get a second bid, as I understand it. And we never got an offer to do anything except to make this presentation. So that's where we stand right now. I think it's a valuable piece of property, and I don't think our offer embarrassed you or us, but I'm not saying it's the right number. We can certainly take a look at that again.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Given the green light, when would you like to start your project?
I'm sorry, I didn't get.
Given the green light to go ahead, when would you like to start the actual construction?
Well, we're in a real preliminary stage because we don't have any land. We can't plan too well. We don't know how many units exactly until we get the size of the land, how high we have to go. We don't want to go up too high with seniors. But we're ready. With HUD, we're squared away. Not a problem with the loan. We have a little money of our own, and as soon as we can just take care of all of the necessary paperwork, we have to take care of the zoning. I know we have to do that. First, we got to get it surveyed, get it cut off from the major property, and as soon as we can get those things out of the way, we're rolling.
So given those factors, less than a year's time, you think you'd be able to get your project started?
I wouldn't want to say that because all those things are not under my control. But if it were left up to me, and I can get them done in a year, certainly we would do it in a year, yes. We're not going to change our minds. You can hold me to that.
I do have one other follow-up question. With the multi-story, are you committed in your design to have elevators? And one or more, or whatever kind of elevators versus stairs?
I'm getting a little bit of an echo here.
I have the same issue. Since you must consider multi-story units.
Yes.
Do you contemplate the installation of one or more elevators?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's absolutely mandatory if we go above one floor. With seniors, you have to have an elevator. I just think you have to do that.
And one final question, Mr. Hines. If you had to refer back to your trustees for consideration of $2 more than your initially bid, how long would it take you to do that process?
I'm not quite sure I caught your question.
All right. If you had to go back to your trustees to consider them providing maybe two additional dollars to your bid, how long would it take you to go through that process?
Well, we don't have to go back to the church trustees. Holland Homes is an independent corporation. So the board of directors, there are nine of us, eight now, we have one deceased that we're looking for a replacement for. We make the decisions between us. So we're supported by the church, and we support the church as well, but we don't rely on the trustees of.
Yeah, I was referring to your board of trustees for Holland Homes, actually. You can confer with them maybe tomorrow morning.
Well, yeah, we meet monthly, and we just, we're a pretty close-knit group, and we do what has to be done.
All right.
Not a lot of red tape among us. We know each other pretty well.
Mr. Hines, it sounds as though you really know what you're doing. So do you have any others who would like to speak on behalf of the project? Or closing remarks?
I'm sorry, I have a tough time hearing.
Okay, and don't feel badly about that. You know, we all have that problem. The question was, do you have additional people from the company that you represent who would like to speak to the commissioners this afternoon?
I don't know. I'll ask them. Anybody have anything to add?
Okay. Then Mr. Hines say, you're free to conclude, but just take as much time as you need. Or to put it another way, you're free to finish up, but if you need more time, just keep going. And if you can't quite understand that, thank you very much for being here.
I didn't catch it all, but.
Well, if you have anything else you'd like to say, you know, sometimes people will leave and say, "God, I wish I'd have said so-and-so." Well, this is the opportunity.
I guess if I had one or two things to say, I would say this. We are not land developers, although we have done, that's the field that we're in, kind of, but we just do this because it's the work of the church that we feel like we're doing. Secondly, we are not for profit. This is a labor of love for us.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for being with us, Mr. Hines. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yes, sir.
Would you like a pamphlet?
Sure, absolutely.
You can just hand them to the clerk over here, and she'll get them to the board.
And you can take the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, we'll go ahead and dive into our formal agenda and the business items. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions and hopefully have answered all the questions the board might have had. I'll go ahead and dive into them. Item four is a resolution authorizing execution of amendment between Forsyth County and Salem Solutions LLC. It provides temporary clinical staffing at the Cleveland Avenue Dental Clinic. It's not to exceed $79,500, and this is due to some vacant positions that we'll have savings to pay for from.
How many questions?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Whizen Hunt. Second by Commissioners Fleming, Elamine, and Don Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right. Item five, you've got a resolution authorizing execution of a contract for temporary staffing services for the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office to Express Services Incorporated. This was competitively bid, and this is not to exceed $65,000.
Questions?
Move approval.
Comments? Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item six is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Genprobe Sales and Service Subsidiary of Hologic Incorporated. It provides test kits and supplies to complete testing using the Hologic Panther device at the Department of Public Health's lab. This is a fiscal year '22 contract, not to exceed $406,450, really for all that testing that the department does.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Liberty Plaza LLC to provide parking space services to Forsyth County. It is an FY22 budget item as well, and this is for the jury, those having jury duties and court staff, and not to exceed $97,000. This will go, be much reduced once the courthouse project is completed because the construction area is what is, was where those spaces will go in the future.
Comments or questions?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item eight is a resolution selecting and authorizing execution of an agreement with Davie Construction Company to act as the design builder and to provide design and pre-construction services for the Public Safety Center Upfit Project. This is really to move the sheriff up, but really to accommodate the co-location of the 911 system from Winston-Salem, 911 center. It is, we did go through a qualified process to select the responsible party, and it's not to exceed $88,000.
Comments?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item nine is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education for the school resource officer deputy positions. It is 37 SRO positions for FY22, and it is fully funded, obviously, by the county almost in its entirety through a, but this is the revenue side of the contract, the Sheriff's Department, in an amount of $3,515,974.
Motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, Elamine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next group of matters are property matters. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and Tanglewood Farm Incorporated for lease of the county-owned property, which is the Tanglewood Park Horse Mule Barns with stables, pastures, office restrooms, riding rinks. It is revenue-based contract and it is based partly on their, their revenue over $60,000. And this really is the whole horse-related kind of thematic programming at Tanglewood.
Comments?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richard Linville, second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I'll take items 11 and 12 together. They are resolution authorizing the grant and execution of license agreements to two property owners, the Edward Marie Spain at 7429 Craig Road and Timothy Wayne Hairston at 8570 Blues Creek Road. These are really license agreements to continue the use of property as it's owned by Duke Energy as we get through the sale of this property for the Blues Lake Park.
Motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing execution of a use agreement between Forsyth County and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education for use of county-owned property at 3740 North Liberty Street. We're going to do a shared dog service agreement on warehouse space to accommodate some demands they have for, for storage.
Comments?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item 14 is a resolution accepting the highest bid to purchase county-owned real property by negotiated offer advertisement upset bid at Zero Sheridan Street. The successful bidder was Curtis Caso in an amount of $7,950.
Questions? Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Whizen Hunt. Second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item 15 is a similar item. It's a resolution accepting the highest bid to purchase county-owned real property by negotiated offered advertisement upset bid for Zero Kevin Drive. Alpha and Omega Investments submitted a bid of $5,000.
Questions? Motion to approve by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I have a problem, or we may all have a problem. I'm not certain how this is going to play out. Several weeks ago, I got a call from the owners of West Bend Vineyard, who planned to have a wonderful July 4th event at their vineyard. And of course, they serve wine and beer that they manufacture there. They went and got a liquor, liquor license, actually got it, set it up. And then the ALE people came by and said, "No, you can't do that." And they threatened to take their liquor license away, their beer and wine and everything else, and shut them down because of a little complication in state law that says unincorporated areas, we have to approve their sale of liquor by the drink. Gordon's been working on it. He found the statute to go on. July 4th is around the corner. We won't be back before then. And if this board can see fit to move this agenda, to add this agenda item, it'll take a little time to prepare it, I imagine. But we could take it up and they could go ahead with their July 4th celebration, which they have already planned, hope anybody could attend. But it is in the unincorporated area of Forsyth. It is one of those agricultural, what do we call those?
Volunteer ag district.
Yeah, voluntary ag district. So this, it just, they're tripping over these different state laws and this would clean it up. And I would hope that we could get enough votes on this board to allow this agenda item to be held today. So I'd like to hear from the commissioners if they have any problem with that. It is, it is liquor by the drink for the entire county. And although all of our cities have it already and doing quite well with it, this would add unincorporated areas.
Well, what you're doing is trying to help a local company. Mr. Watkins, is there any comments you would have on, Mr. Comments from Ted Kaplan?
So the only time that, that I'm aware of that the county, not the municipalities, but the county has considered an ABC referendum was in 1951 and it was voted down to allow ABC stores in the county. It was approved at the same time by Winston-Salem and since then, four communities in the county have voted to allow the sale of mixed drinks within those municipalities, those being Winston-Salem, Kernersville, Clemmons, and Lewisville. In the rest of the county, outside of those four municipalities, it's not legal for a business to serve mixed drinks. There is an exception for distilleries to have tastings, but not to serve mixed drinks. What I did discover in the statutes under 18B 603 D1, it states that in a county where the sale of mixed beverages has been approved by at least three cities, and we have four, as I indicated, and the population of those cities adds up to more than two-thirds of the population, then the board, this board, the board of commissioners, could authorize the sale of mixed beverages throughout the county. The last figures I saw, you're supposed to use census figures. We don't quite have the 2020 census figures out. From the 2010 figures, those four municipalities added up to 81% of the county population. So that is more than two-thirds. So, so that's, that's what we found. This is not, as you know, this obviously has not been briefed or, or publicized to the public. But it does appear that this board does have authority to authorize the sale of mixed beverages throughout the county.
Comments on what we've heard so far, commissioners?
I have one procedural question.
Yes, sir.
And that is, do we have a mechanism for amending our agenda as the board? Like an, like a add-on to the agenda for special consideration? As an example, school board allowed that if two-thirds of the vote actually agreed to add an item that had not been advertised?
I could be mistaken. I don't believe there's any formal policy for that. We do have a number of added items that we have printed up for you that will be considered today if the board wishes to consider them. But I'm not aware of any formal policy regarding that. The manager can correct me if I'm mistaken.
During my tenure here, the board has made very few rules, procedural rules around how business is conducted. So you really have very, very few of those.
I have a question in that regard. In this pandemic time, and I put that in capital letters. And with the time limitations we have on today's meeting, it sounds on the face of it as if we're rushing this through and getting it done. But the fact is, the Fourth of July is right around the corner and we've got a company in, in our county, which has planned, whether informed or not, to celebrate Independence Day in this country. So the question I would have for the attorney that we have and county manager, from my perspective anyway, if we did make that move and provided some help at this time of the year, what ramifications do you see or precedents do you see that could prove that we're not doing the right thing? In my own mind, you know, what we probably would end up doing if we had from now till October, we'd probably go ahead and do it. But the big problem right now is the time limitation. But still, I don't have a problem with it one way or the other. Question is, what, what happens if we do today?
It's just a major policy change, but it's up to you as to how you proceed.
How does that affect our decision-making processes in the future if this is a major change?
Well, I can comment that I, I'm in favor of the, of passing that resolution. I mean, it is somewhat antiquated. Seventy years ago, we had a vote and, and basically this board has that authority. We've dealt with all those. I mean, I don't think there's a big issue on that, but I, and I realize we could go forward and do it under our current rules. But I actually think we ought to have a couple of rules. I mean, the issue of just a walk-in, walk-in item without being ever viewed by this body beforehand is for action, I just think is inappropriate. And I think we need some kind of general meeting bylaws about how we conduct our meetings. Whether is it something be briefed once, should be briefed twice, should it be? Whatever some rules, we went to great lengths to make sure we have typically two briefings. And yours truly has argued against that in the past and said, "Oh, no, we need to have two briefings." And we have a whole bunch of items on this agenda that have not been briefed, although I think they're very routine. I did read them this morning. I'm, I'm fine with those. But this one was not among that list and we're talking about it in the middle of an action meeting. And so I, I do appreciate that the problem and, and probably could even be supported of it. But I, I think we need some kind of commitment to have some sort of operational procedures to not allow things like this to happen. I just don't think you should act like this. Unless you have a policy that allows that with a supermajority of some sort for that to happen. I could probably handle that because in that, that's a way to kind of procedurally get at it.
Okay, we're talking about alcohol.
Yeah, if I can.
I know what we're talking about, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about some procedures that I think this board needs to have to not just allow business to occur in this fashion. But however we can do it, and I'm in favor of it, I just don't like the procedural aspect of basically no knowledge by even this body prior to the event. And I also add, a matter of just two months ago, had a similar sort of conversation with Old Nick Distilleries outside of Lewisville in the unincorporated area that was discovering the same issue. And at that time, we apparently did not figure that out. And basically, they went to Lewisville to ask for a spot annexation to accommodate some of this exact same issues. So it's just a, and I never thought about trying to bring forward, you know, to do that, totally out of cycle, because I just don't think that way.
Mr. Kaplan?
This is not the first time we've added items to an agenda, so I, even at the last minute. So I, I appreciate Dr. Martin's concern about procedure. Always, always, always said it was a fun debate to have. But this is an issue that's come up. Constituents have called. We can either solve it for them or we can postpone it and not do that. So that's the way I'm looking at this issue. We'll deal with procedure later. But for the time being, this is an important issue for them. I promised I would help any way I could to get it done for them and this is one way to do it. So I'll leave that as it is. And I'd like to call the, I'd like to make a motion that we take this up at the end of this session.
Further comments? Anyone?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It's very rare that government responds to the needs of the citizens immediately. And to me, that fits into that category. I know procedure is very, very important. Process is very, very important. But I think when we can respond to the need of the citizens, we should do so, especially we've had interpretation of the law about esteemed lawyer. I have no problem making this, and I think we can add to the agenda.
I'll have to tell you, I agree with, with your comments, Mr. Elamine.
Is that a second?
Oh, that's a second. Thank you.
Okay, that is a second and a comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I think all of you know that I'm a real stickler for procedure. But during this pandemic, there's so many small businesses that have just lost so much money. Some of them will recover, some of them won't. I can't think of a better way to honor the Fourth of July than to allow these folks to have their party. I do not in any way want to make a habit of this. And, but, but I will, I will vote for this motion.
I'd like to amend the motion, please.
Yes, sir.
And my amended motion is exactly what Commissioner Kaplan said with the additional part and that by our next meeting, we will have, which is we have a break here, plenty of time, that we will have some draft meeting bylaws to examine at that meeting publicly for consideration in a briefing session.
Mr. Chairman, comment?
Yes, sir.
I try to keep it to a minimum. I know things can come up very quickly. But would it have been a problem for anything that might go on? Anything that one commissioner gets a call on or everybody but me gets a call on? To at least notify the commissioners even an hour before the time to talk about it? I just, I'll leave it at that. That just, just a little time to think about something. What in, what is wrong with that? I hate to get, it, it's just, I hate to get, as I've been called before, emotional sometime. But it is, I don't care who it is, Mr. Kaplan. It is no call for any commissioner to come in here without just giving us any, even me. I've wanted to do things like that sometime, but I would let a commissioner or the board, even if it wasn't but 15 minutes, if I just knew about some 15 minutes beforehand or an hour or anything, and I know this must have just come up in the last couple of days. I hadn't, I'm always thinking about what in the world is going to happen next when we come to the next meeting, that anything can happen. It's, it's just, it just ought not to happen anymore. But if somebody has got something they want us to consider, what in the world is wrong with not or with notifying the board members? Just, you don't have to do it today or anybody else don't. But if somebody can give me some, some kind of justification of something like this, justification to consider a doing it is okay. But we come in and we got our agenda, got some added items and then somebody comes up with, and you wouldn't have come up with it unless somebody hadn't asked you to do so. I understand that, but at least we could have noticed, be notified. And if I've offended anybody and owe anybody any apologies, then I'll do that. So I'll just leave it there.
You know, the nice thing about what you just said is, that's typical Richard Linville. And you're right. I think the way I'm looking at it is, and it's just plain and simple. We're in different times under the circumstances. The pandemic has caused problems with everybody, from government to the school systems, to the small businessman, the big businessman. And we're coming up to a national holiday. And the question simply is, should the company that is in our county go ahead with their plans or cancel them? Or should they lose money? Or should they try to make a little money on this thing? Because they're a profit-making organization. They're not nonprofit. And finally, there are exceptions to every rule at various times. And this may be, although I'm not going to say it is, because we're not going to war. But it could be that today would be one of those times when we say, let's make an exception to the rule. And that's the reason I asked the question a while ago about what precedent would we set if we did something like this? Because as sure as God made heaven and earth, that'll come up again down the road because someone will say, "Well, don't you remember back in the Fourth of July? You said, 'No, we're not going to do this' or 'Yes, we will.'" And that's something that will follow us from day one. So that's basically how I look at it. I don't disagree with what Ted is talking about.
Just allow me to say one more thing.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't know that I should do so, but I'm going to do it anyway. I'll apologize to Mr. Kaplan for the tone I have spoke in. But Mr. Kaplan, I would have spoken the same tone to any commissioner that felt that they needed to do something like this. I understand what bothers me so bad is if to come into a meeting cold like this was something to consider when at least we could have been notified even an hour beforehand. I just leave it there.
Further comments or questions?
No apology necessary.
No apology necessary.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something, and, and Richard, I apologize to you because I was in your office right before the meeting started and I received a call this week from Senator Burr's office, which those folks had, had gone all the way to the federal level trying to get help. I had called Damon this week and asked him about it. And then Gordon started researching it and Gordon gave me the answer to it when I got here today. And, and I'll just be honest with you, I forgot, I did not mention it to you and I'm sorry and I will apologize to you because you are certainly right. There's nothing worse than surprises. And I say to myself, And I say to myself, I say to Dudley, are we going to have any surprises today? I hate surprises, and I understand what you're saying, and I apologize.
Well, it's, it's accepted and no need for you to do so. It very, I promised, I didn't promise I would stop talking, but I'll, I'll try to do so. It's very seldom, if Mr. Marshall was here, he'd wonder what in the world was happening to him. He's one who would probably say the same kind of, he did. He felt that way about things. If he felt like he was in the dark on something, he'd be the first to get upset. But it's been some, this is, I don't recall anything like this. It's the way I feel about it or anything. And, and, you know, if something is important enough to me to speak out, then I'm going to do it and suffer the consequences it need be.
I've been on the board a long time, too, and I agree with you. This is the first time we've taken an issue like this and decided one way or the other on it. Do we have any further comments?
I'd like to go back to my substitute motion.
Okay.
You indicated the issue of rules, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm suggesting we have some rules and a way to make exceptions if necessary in something like this.
If we do this, right?
If we, no, what I'm saying is, I feel exactly the way Commissioner Linville feels, is what I'm saying. But I'm also saying, I do understand the particular case at hand, and I do, and, and I think we need a procedure to do, to not allow this kind of thing to happen again. And I can, if, but I want a commitment that we'll have those procedures and not just forget about it, and that we will be willing to follow that, and we, and that we can brief it. And Commissioner Kaplan thinks this is unrelated, and I, quite frankly, it's kind of related to my support of this motion. Not that it apparently does not appear to be necessary, but I would like to make that as a substitute motion that we add, that we simply also have some rules established that are related to this matter because this is what's causing it.
I can see this coming. I will help you create a system of meetings and bylaws in that regard. But I don't think it needs to be tied to an amendment to take this up. I'm not sure what the relation would be, but I'd be thrilled to have a motion after this is taken. And I would second it for you as well.
So now you're suggesting?
I'm not a Roberts rules expert. I don't see, I don't see this a problem to have a substitute motion that gets, it's something that is tangentially related. It is related because by golly, we wouldn't have been making the motion if we hadn't been in the middle of this discussion.
Would it be better to say that it's the?
I've, I think, I think our attorney, Mr. Watkins, has probably some idea of the Roberts rules issue here, and be happy for him to opine on that.
Give us some guidance on that, Mr. Watkins.
So the present motion, as I understand it, is that the mixed drink matter be taken up at the end of the meeting, and I believe that was seconded. The proposed amendment by Dr. Martin has not yet been seconded. If it is seconded, we could vote on the amendment or substitute motion. If not, we would go forward with Commissioner Kaplan's motion.
So you're saying this, the word amendment is better than the word second emotion? I mean, not second emotion. You said that you want to make a motion.
If I'm understanding what you've said, if we're only voting now to consider it at the end of the meeting, I can support that, and then I will, I will. Since, since we have no rules, I'll make a motion, as soon as we're finished with that one, I'll make a motion that we, what I want to do, and we'll consider it at the end of the meeting.
So can we tie that to Mr. Kaplan's motion?
No, I'll withdraw my amendment.
So you're fine now? The only motion pending is, is the one Commissioner Kaplan made and was seconded, and that is to take up the mixed beverage issue at the end of the meeting.
Go right ahead.
No, Max, and Darren, is yours still?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, but is you are still on for the end of the meeting as well?
Yes, for, I'm on for the end of the meeting for that one, and I'm going to make a motion as soon as we finish voting on this one.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Are you ready, Mrs. Whiston?
I'm ready.
All in favor of Mr. Kaplan's motion, raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, at the end of this meeting, we consider a separate motion, consider this motion, that we, by the, by whatever, the July, the first briefing date, three weeks from today, that we review and examine some bylaws for our meeting, conducting our meetings, both to address importance in briefing, not briefing, when exceptions can be made, et cetera, and that we have some operational bylaws to review at that point.
I'll second your motion.
Second, oh.
We'll both second the motion, Fleming, Alamein, and Dave Platter. Further comments? All in favor of Commissioner Don Martin's second motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously on both ends, which means, Mr. Watkins, you and Mr. Watts are going to have a really thrilling time trying to figure out what we're trying to do, I think.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, we've been at it about an hour and a half. We have a number of appointments. We can take a short recess before we do the appointments and dive into them, or we can take a recess afterwards, however you'd like to do that.
Let's take a recess right now, is that all right? All right? Over to our county manager, Dudley Watts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because of some just organizational things, we're just going to, I think, Mr. Chairman, you're okay with pushing the appointments off to the very end of the meeting, and we'll go ahead and dive into these added items and deal with that, and then come back to appointments.
Well, one of the commissioners I know has to leave early, so I would rather wait until the next meeting if we can do that.
I think we probably need to do the appointments, but I'll just push them to the end.
All right, that's fine. Is that agreeable? Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Very good. So I'll jump to the added items and start with item 35. Item 35 is an amendment to the FY21 Fire Tax District Special Revenue Fund and FY21 Budget Ordinance. I'll turn it over to Kyle Wolf and ask him to come up. He's going to handle a couple of these. Mostly, they're year-end matters, and we usually have a few of those. And I apologize, we have a few more than normal, but they will make for a cleaner audit, so.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We actually, you saw this one last week, the, this is, first one is an amendment to the FY21 Budget Ordinance to basically be, based on the, the strong sales tax performance that we've had this year, we've had additional sales taxes, and the way we distribute those within the fire tax districts, we needed to actually increase. we needed to actually increase the transfer to the general fund from the fire tax district to recognize that sales tax revenue. That's what, this is an item that we typically do bring to the board at the very end of the year. Have you answered any kind of questions?
Questions, comments, motion?
I move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin. Second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item 36 is also a budget matter. It's an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance that transfers funds from the contingency for prior year public education and governmental or PEG channel support. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Kyle.
Right. And so, again, I apologize for the need to bring these items in on short notice, but this, the first one here, the second one, I guess now, is, it does relate to our public educational governmental or PEG channel support. We budget $25,000 every year in revenue and expenditures for PEG channel support funds. We budgeted on the revenue side and then on the expenditure side to go to the school system. And for the past several years, it has actually not appeared that we've actually received those funds. It's at least not recorded in our system in that line item. Finance really recently discovered that they actually have been coming in, but it was in a different line item, and it's the utilities tax distribution. And so really, what we're trying to do now is pay the schools back for the past, really, five years. It's FY16 through the current year. Total amount that we need to pay is 136, 649, 28. We have 25,000 already budgeted, and so we're requesting a transfer of funds from contingency for the remainder of those. Happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Items 37, 38 are both related to General Crime Prevention Council year-end items.
And so the first one relates more, is actually for the current year, for the FY21 JCPC funding plan. We had four programs that reverted funds in the current year, just based on inability to expend 100% of them. And so in total, $21,401 was reverted from, from a few different programs. And $8,148 are being reallocated to two other programs, and the remaining will be reverted back to the state. And so what we're trying to do now is basically correct the funding plan for FY21 to allow these funds to be spent by these other two programs and then revert them, the remaining funds back to the state.
Comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. Second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And the, and the next, the next JCPC item is a amendment in the FY21 Budget Ordinance to appropriate revenue that we've received back from grantees that have reimbursed the county for unspent funds from actually the previous fiscal year. And so we need to remit those funds back to the state. We've received the money back from those programs recently, actually just got two of the, two, two of them, actually just got those back within the last week or two. And so this is really just appropriating that, appropriating those funds so that we can actually submit them back to the state. And it was basically based on, you know, because of the COVID-19, they had difficulty, you know, it really impacted their program and being able to have, to serve some of these juveniles. And so we're just trying to revert those funds back to the state.
Questions or a motion?
I do.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, Chairman. I let the other agenda item kind of slide through real quick, but it's troubling for me to hear that we are returning back funds for such needed services for juvenile crime and prevention. And the council, I needed to relatively understand what we're doing with the nonprofits that we are allocating these funds to. And hopefully, we're making better decisions moving forward in terms of the allocations and the use. So thank you for allowing me to share that.
Just one comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we had some agencies who could not fulfill their goals, and all money is allocated based on a goal, specific outreach. And so because of COVID-19, some of them just didn't reach that goal, so we had to unfortunately get the money back. And the money has to be returned back to the state in certain items.
Sure.
That was the end result of it.
What I was just acknowledging is that we'll look at what were the nonprofits that were utilizing those entities for. If they cannot meet goals in the future, then we'll make some changes. Thank you.
Additional comments? Second of Mr. Elamine's motion. Mr. Elamine?
Yes.
It sounds as though your motion is going to fail for lack of a second.
I'll second.
You will second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I made the motion to move it.
All right, good.
Forward.
And Mrs. Wisniewski has seconded the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Nice going.
Agenda item 39 is a resolution authorizing amendment of the ZACEA agreement for tax foreclosure services. John Burgess will review this.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Your approval authorizes an amendment to the current contract to align with existing budgeted funds for the exact purpose that we're talking about today that would assist us in moving forward with NREM foreclosure on delinquent properties that have numerous potential heirs in a more efficient manner and in a way that minimizes overall potential cost to the county. At last year's winter work session, I gave a presentation regarding the benefits and the need to have the ability to pursue foreclosure on property tax delinquent properties in both the mortgage style and NREM process. This expenditure allows us to take another step toward NREM foreclosure, and it will result in 171 cases being headed toward that program. And my apologies for the late submission of this agenda item.
Comments? Motion?
I approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Gloria Wisenhunt. Second by Commissioner Ted Kaplan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 40 is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the contract with Frank L. Bloom Construction Company for the Collidium project. So turn it over to Damon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. So pursuant to last week's briefing, there was a request that we expedite the GMP, so we're bringing that to you today. This is a summary of some of the activities and actions that have taken place prior to today. And so you know that when the construction manager was selected in February of 2018, and you see in 2019, they were selected to basically go through the completion of the design phase. Then you see the GMP amendment to do demolition was authorized, so that part of the project has been completed. Then on May 12th and May 28th of this current year, bids were received, first on May 12th, and then when they didn't receive three bids for certain trades, they had to put those back out on the 28th. And so at that point, even if they get none, they could self-perform the work. If they get fewer than three, they can use that. And so on June 18th, Frank L. Bloom submitted their GMP proposal. You can see the, the GMP proposal is $27,188,029. That includes their CM fee. It also includes the demo part for the city that they are funding. And then you can see the MWBE number at this point prior to the work actually happening. And so if you add that, as well as demolition and the pre-construction work, that's $28,587,630. So the GMP, though, is the number up above. As information, on March 4th, Collidium notified us that at that point, our auditor went and looked, and they had $9,65,918 that they had in pledges, 128 of them. And those are for primarily exhibits for the facility. So we have the building, they have the exhibit portion. You can see a rendering of the exterior of the building. So in the event that this is successful today, the notice to proceed and the groundbreaking thereabouts will be in August. On May 2023, we anticipate that would be when substantial completion would occur. And then in September, the museum would complete moving in. And then there'd be an October ribbon cutting thereabouts. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions, comments, motion?
My thing is, I apologize. So in terms of our budget, because I know the, I'm on the Collidium board. We met this week, and I know that there was, Collidium agreed to underwrite part of the, of a couple of the adjusting, that parts that were, there were some deducts that were taken out, some other changes, that basically they chose to underwrite, and about $130,000. I just want to make sure, I don't see that sort of recognized in your PowerPoint, that, that the total project that, that Collidium has actually agreed to provide and underwrite, if there are no savings from the contingencies, a certain amount. And I, I think we ought to at least have that on the record.
Sure. And so we would amend it. So I just learned that. But we would amend the, the GMP in the event that we have additional funding. And I hope to have an even larger amendment when I, as I mentioned to you last week, that I would come back with a proposal for Recovery Act funding to restore basically all the deducts.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Motion? I'd like to make that motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Don Martin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming Elamine. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The two commissioners missing.
All right. Agenda item 41 and 42 are both resolutions adjusting the compensation of county officials. Item 41 is the county attorney, and item 42 is the clerk to the board. The board met and closed session to review performance, and this is the action resulting from that.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming Elamine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Don Martin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right, so we can return to the discussion around the added resolutions, or we can go ahead and do appointments. I'll look for direction from the board on whether, you said at the very end of the meeting, and so you want to go ahead and handle appointments.
What's your pleasure, board? We did, we did say at the last meeting, we would listen to Mr. Martin make his motion.
Would it be agreeable with the boards just to go ahead and deal with the appointments and then at the end, discuss the matter we've discussed previously?
Can't find with me.
Great.
You all agree?
Yes.
Okay. You've got it. You're on your way.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a number of committees and appointments to approve this afternoon. And again, I would like to thank all of the people who continue to agree to serve their, the reappointments, and to thank a, a group of folks who have been willing to step up and, and actually add their name to the list to desire to serve. And as I looked at all the backgrounds, we have some excellent folks that are willing to serve, and I really appreciate their efforts and their interest. For the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have seven appointments to that slot. Five are open. We have no applicants. We'll continue that till another meeting. For the Animal Services Board Advisory Board, we have two appointments, two-year terms expiring May 2023. These are fill the slots for at-large. We have one citizen wishing to serve, Bill Cowan. I'd like to make a motion that we approve him by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
For Animal Control Advisory Board, we also have an appointment for a two-year term for the capacity of county resident and owner of a fertile hunting dog. We have no applicants, and we need to continue advertising. For the Animal Services Board, we have an appointment for a two-year term expiring May 20, May 2023. This particular category is a county resident and owner of an animal other than a dog or cat. And we have two applicants, incumbent Chad Griffin and a citizen wishing to serve Maxwell Cullen. Please vote for one.
Mr. Chairman, Chad Griffin received majority vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have also for the Animal Services Advisory Board, we have one appointment for a two-year term expiring 2023. This particular category is a county resident who is a member, employee, or officer of an animal welfare organization. We have one citizen wishing to serve that fits that category, Aaron Turner. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And move to the Appearance Committee of Winston-Salem Forsyth County. We have two appointments, three-year terms expiring February 2024. This particular category is special experience in educational design. There are no applicants. We need to continue to advertise them. For Cardinal Innovations Community Advisory Board, we have five appointments for two-year terms expiring April 2021. Category is open for anyone. We actually have four people willing to serve. Three incumbents, Tim Gallagher, Amy Stevens, Diane Walker, and a citizen wishing to serve, Sheridan Singletary. I have served on this board, and particularly have worked with Tim, Amy, and Diane. Thank them. We can move the, appoint these by acclamation. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Commission on Ending Homelessness in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, we have no applicants. We can continue to a future meeting. For Community Child Protection, Teen Child Fatality Prevention Team, we have no applicants, and we need to continue to a future meeting. For the Environmental Assistance and Protection Board, we have three appointments to three-year terms expiring June 2024. Category is open. Anyone can apply. We do have three citizens wishing to serve, Susan App, Gail Goldsmith, and Reed Hutchins. I can make a motion. We approve those three by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
For Forsyth County Agriculture Advisory Board, we have two appointments, three-year terms expiring February 2024. With the capacity, with the category, we have one actively engaged in farming in Forsyth, and one category that is simply at-large. We have, we actually have one for each of those. A citizen wishing to serve, Neil Dagenhart, to serve in the at-large slot, and Lucas Weevil. I mean, the actively engaged in farming. I can make a motion. We approve those by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
For the Forsyth County Historical Resources Commission, we have one appointment to a four-year term expiring June 2025. Actually, it's an at-large category. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Alana Meltzer-Hollowfield, and one citizen wishing to serve, Cheryl Harry. Please vote for one.
Mr. Chairman, we have a tie vote. We will need a second vote, please.
Some matter of information. Would you mention those two names who are tied?
The incumbent is Alana Meltzer-Hollowfield, and the citizen is Cheryl Harry. Mr. Chairman, Cheryl Harry received majority vote.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, we have Forsyth County Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Council. We have no applicants, we will continue to advertise. Next, we have Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have a number of appointments, 13 to be exact, and for two-year terms. And I'll just mention quickly the categories. We have six at-large, one member of the business community, one member of the faith community, one Parks and Recreation, one person under 18, one person under age of 18 who's a member of the State Youth Council, one substance abuse professional, and one United Way or other nonprofit representative. We do have five people wishing to serve and I'll mention them in their categories. Incumbents wishing to serve, Ryan Bravo, who's a person under the age of 18, Fua Martin, Parks and Recreation Department, and Al Witter-Jabbar, at-large. Citizens wishing to serve, we have Keith Brown and another one, two of the, that's another of the six at-large slots, and, and Kimber Lee McNeil, I'm from a nonprofit representative, like to make a motion that we appoint these five by acclamation and continue to advertise.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the Forsyth Technical Community College Board of Trustees. We have one appointment, uh, the four-year terms expiring June 2025. The category is open. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Alan Proctor, two citizens wishing to serve, Vivian Chandler and Corey English. Please vote for one.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. There are three appointments to six-year terms. Basically, it is an open category of, of membership. We have one citizen wishing to serve, Gail Goldsmith. I can make a motion, we approve by acclamation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the Jury Commission. There is one appointment to a two-year term expiring June 2023. Again, the capacity is open. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Tasia Wilson. Like to make a motion that we approve Tasia Wilson's appointment by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee Forsyth County. We actually have eight appointments that, and they've been continued since several previous meetings. We have two administrator slots and seven that are open. We do have two incumbents wishing to serve in open category, Aquita Burns and Philip Carter. I can make a motion, we approve those by acclamation and continue to advertise.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And we have the Piedmont Triad Regional Workshop Development Board. We have a number of appointments, one appointment is in a two-year term expiring June 23, 2023, and the category is adult education. An incumbent wishing to serve is Shannon Taylor-Stanley. Like to make a motion, we approve her by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Again, continuing on the Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, we have three appointments for two-year terms expiring 2023. The category is business and we can vote for three and we have four people, two, two incumbents, Lisa Tillman and James Rochester, and one citizen wishing to serve, two, two citizens wishing to serve, Taylor Hutchins and Mark Moretti. Please vote for three. large business and our clerk, Ashley Slope, actually talked to them today, the four First Development Board folks, and actually there is no necessity to distinguish between large and small, correct?
That is correct.
So we just consolidated, called them all business.
Thank you.
Continuing with the Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, we have an appointment again for a two-year term expiring 2023. This particular category is a community-based, so please vote for one. We have two citizens wishing to serve, Robert Eggleston and Robert Irvin. Please vote for one. Thank you. We have three additional appointments to the Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board and we have three people, they're in different categories. I'm going to mention all three of them and we can have one vote to fill a, again, it's a two-year term appointment. This particular category is organized labor. We do have one incumbent wishing to serve, Alvin Warwick. The second group is a, again, a two-year appointment. This category actually, this is actually listed as small business, so it is a business category.
That is correct.
So it's another business category. We have one additional incumbent wishing to serve, Darren Poole, who is an incumbent wishing to serve. And finally, we have, again, a two-year appointment for a category of Wagner-Pacer. And we have Tony Mitzi-Mizzi-Maziziya. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve all three of those by acclamation.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we have the Utility Commission. We have one appointment for a five-year term. We actually have no applicants and we will have to continue advertising for a replacement. Finally, the Zoning Board of Adjustment of Forsyth County. We have three appointments, one appointment to fill the unexpired term of Robert Leake expiring April 2023, and two appointments to three-year terms expiring April 2024. We have two regular members and one alternate members and we, and Robert Leake is willing now as a citizen, regular citizen to return as a regular member and continue and he is, he can be approved by acclamation. I'd like to make that motion.
I will second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. So the only other item we had, other than the, the items discussed to add in the middle of the meeting, were the American Rescue Plan Strategy Recommendation. And so if I could get Lee Plunkett to come up very quickly, we've done a bunch of staff work around some dates that we wanted to go ahead and get out there and sort of a, a, a strategy around this next session of budget discussions around these funds. And so I'll turn it over to Lee Plunkett and I appreciate him's service, he's our county treasurer, but he has also really helped through the CRF process and now through the American Rescue Plan Act process in terms of, of leading us in this effort. So thank you, Lee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll try to go through this quickly. So just a, a brief recap on the history of it. We actually received 74.25 million in total funding and that was split into two tranches and we've received the first as of May, so 37.13 million. And supposedly, we, we will receive the second tranche within 12 months of that date, so ideally May of next year, next calendar year.
Comments or questions? Motion?
There's more to it. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so just a, a quick review of the purpose of the funds, again, to provide a substantial infusion of resources to meet pandemic response needs and rebuild a stronger, more equitable economy as a country recovers and the four uses that you all have seen already, which is the public health and economic impacts, premium pay, revenue loss, and investments in infrastructure. And the public health and economic impacts piece, that is by far the largest category for eligible spending and that is where there's even greater flexibility for residents within the QCTs and other disproportionately impacted communities. And so I know there's, it's been requested and Matt Forsyth was able to put together a map to kind of give a, a general picture of what the QCTs look like, so we appreciate that. The second category is premium pay and that's for any essential workers that are on the front lines that both have, have born and currently bear the highest risk for providing services. Revenue loss, which you guys are very familiar with, 18 million was the county calculation, 6 million was in the fiscal year 22 budget and the remaining is being held in reserve. And then investments in infrastructure and it's limited to water, sewer, and broadband. And so to get to the meat, this is a staff recommended budget process and what we recommend right now is a, a multi-phase approach, so that would give you all a chance to go through two to three application periods and approvals. First, we think there might be worthy proposals that maybe aren't ready to come through on this first phase right now. And so that would give them some time to prepare and come in on a second or third application period. We also think it would help maximize the impact of the investment of funds, but also avoiding duplication. So I know there's other recipients, including the state, the cities, schools, and Forsyth Tech, and so to be able to track what they're spending and needs that they're meeting or not meeting and you all can take time to, to figure out how you would like to invest the funds. And I think it'd also line up nicely with the second receipt of funds in next year. And so then, to begin, we'll put out a public input, put out a public input survey and then we'd have an application period where everyone can apply that has a proposal, both internally and externally of the county. And then, once it closes, we would evaluate and elevate as needed and then that would allow you all to go into some, some work sessions to look at them and then make the approval. And so what we have here is our, our first take at what this process would look like for at least the first phase. So in early next month, we would open the public input survey, again, online, and that would allow for general public input on where they see needs or, or what they see the needs are. And then July 15th through August 27th, we would hold the application period open and again, we would have access for internal, external organizations and departments to apply and, and put in their proposals. And then in September, we, the staff would review and evaluate the proposals and we would begin to note here, based off your board initiative, you know, where 80% of the funds available in the process would reach our most marginalized communities, which also includes the QCTs. And then finally, in September and October timeframe, we would schedule a three-week review, an approval process for you. Week one would look like a normal budget work session where the staff would present all the proposals that meet eligible expenditures according to the guidance. And then week two would be just another work session, a follow-up discussion. And then at this session, we would maybe expect if you had any further questions that you would like to hear from the proposers, you could bring them in to talk and ask those questions. And then a third week for the actual approval process where you, where you go through that, through all the proposals and, and make your choices. And so again, this is quickly, but that's our recommended budget process and what our first phase would look like, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any comments or questions?
One question, Mr. Chairman. I spoke to a few nonprofits during the Juneteenth celebration and many of them are unaware of the process to apply for these funds, so at one point, we need to have some kind of education piece to inform the public on what the process is, you know, specific target dates, you know, they can have basic information for the general public.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much.
Additional comments?
Two or three of these things, we had, it's a line item that we voted separately on, I'm going to just say this, I voted, the recommendations that you've got and then, or proposal and evaluation of things that you're going to do, the, the, at this time, the part that still talks about 80% of funds going to most marginalized populations, all of the stuff I'll support when it gets time that we get down to we actually doing something then, but that part of it, I'm, I'm still opposed to that part. Not that I wouldn't put money into those areas, just whenever the time comes, because I guess it's still unknown, isn't there still some rules in regard to all of this, about federal rules, what you can do and can't do?
Yeah, right now, the, the, it's called the interim final rule that the guidance, the Treasury Department put out and so, yeah, it is not final yet.
Okay.
But I, I would say clarification is, is, has been forthcoming and we just got the, one of the first rounds of, of sort of additional clarification and it really supports and adds to the rules that are out there. I was just going to add two things. One is, we were going to leave that survey period open. We, we weren't necessarily going to close that survey period, you know, once we start the application process. So we'll, you, we want to provide as much input as the community's willing to give us around that to you to support that. The other one is that the second round, we envisioned sort of occurring in that January, February timeframe of next year. And so the, the second round of applications, we would run kind of concurrent with next year's budget process, because we'll be in a position to do that that we were not this year. And that'll let us align those proposals kind of with that. And so it will look a little different as we enter next year's budget.
So when would county initiatives be brought before? The, the first, I think your application starts July 15th. If we have an, a, a proposal for a county facility, would you want it then or do you want to wait till we start reviewing discussion?
That is a good question.
I think we had, we had, the, the group had really envisioned them all coming to you at the same time, but if you want to see them separately, we can.
No, I'm talking about if we, if we want to do something for mental health or for public health, which is our own organizations, do we, do you, do you want that, obviously you want it between the 15th and the 27th, but do you want it at a particular date, by a particular date?
I think.
Or can that be anytime?
I think anytime. We, the application piece, we're using a particular software that's very helpful to aggregate all the applications and let us review them. So that's what that period is for, to allow both internal departments and then external organizations submit their plans so we can review them.
All right. I'm sorry, just, I didn't catch a little, couple of quick questions. The group of folks that were basically, that we looked at and said might be eligible for funding during the regular budget process, they do not need to reapply. And do they know that?
So, there's a few questions that we would probably need to go back to them to get clarification on. And particularly, the main pieces that we would need to know is, where do those projects fit within the guidance, from their understanding? Just so we could, we could review that and make sure that, you know, the projects that are presented are going to fit within the guidance and comply with that. Also, I think the other question is just mainly informational, so you guys can have all the information needed to evaluate, particularly on the 80% in the QCTs and the marginalized communities. Just give us information on whether they're going to serve that population, whether it's located in a QCT, or it's located, or it's going to serve a population that is disproportionate.
You will likely want some clarification from those, 15 or 20.
Sure.
And so, you, we, as are you, will take responsibility for contacting them to see that they provide that.
Yes.
Since we sort of set them aside. And the second part of that is, there are at least one group in that, that, you know, didn't contemplate that this would be, that they would be considered in the ARP fund. They just, they didn't even know they could be eligible. And if they wanted to change their request in dollar amount, not what they're going to do, but to dollar amount, they could do that then too, if they wanted. They would reconfirm their dollar request as a part of that. So, you're going to do a little follow-up with that group. Okay. The second thing I want to say is, I really think we ought to plan on trying to do this three times. I think if we, if we had great proposals, used everything up in two times, that's great. But I think we ought to contemplate for sure having a third one, so that, you know, we could be, in case it's not all used up, I think we should really think about that. And I think, I think that was it. Sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few final notes. As you guys know, the expenditure period is actually through the end of 2024. But the projects or the program expenditures have to be incurred by then. And we can actually expend by the end of 2026. And it's all forward-looking. There's not much reimbursement capability of programs and projects that have already been spent. And then, I know an administrator type, an outside administrator type is being looked at. So, we're creating that job description now, and we hope to get a person hired by late July or early August, to bring them in early on this process. That's all I have.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Can you anticipate windows that we sort of pass through, might be able to say, yes, we're getting these funds?
Hopefully, in September, October timeframe, when we go through the first review process. And then, that'll give you all the chance to give the say-so.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead. Before, I have one little correction from the previous part, you know, in our appointments. You'll recall, we had a lot of discussion around the Piedmont Tryad Regional Workforce Development Board about naming businesses, large, small, and whatever. Our clerk, Ashley Sloop, pointed out to me that there are actually a total of three business and two small businesses. We only need a business category, so we really can have five businesses. We only appointed four. So, and there is actually one citizen wishing to serve from a business that we could approve by acclamation now, and it would be Mark Moretti. And I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Discussion. Hold on. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Moretti. Yes, ma'am.
While we're still here, if you don't mind, Vice Chair as well, I just wanted to say this, to use my voice today. One of the responsibilities for us as the board commissioners on this board is to appoint members to numerous citizens' boards, commissions, and committees. So, what I'm wanting to do today is just call on the constituency of advocates to support and serve on these committees. We still are working, wanting some support around the Commission in homelessness, the nursing home, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which is very important, and the Forsyth County Community Block Grant Advisory, and the Child Protection Team and Fatality Prevention Team. So, I am calling on the constituency to serve, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
In line with that, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the Winston-Salem leadership for their efforts in finding people to serve on these various boards. They did a Herculean job in doing that. And I support Commissioner McDaniel's appeal. Let's show up and get engaged, and not just sit on the sideline.
It's encouraging to hear that. Yes, sir. Mr. Manager.
Very good. So, you've got a resolution in front of you regarding the matter we discussed earlier. I'll turn it over to our county attorney to review it very quickly.
I have prepared a resolution to approve the sale of mixed beverages throughout Forsyth County. It basically just summarizes the discussion we had earlier. The question has come as to whether this would apply to municipalities that have not already approved the sale of mixed beverages. My reading is that it would. The statute says that you may approve the sale of mixed beverages throughout the county. It doesn't say throughout unincorporated areas of the county. So, my reading is that it would apply to those other municipalities. I'd be happy to follow up with the ABC Board, or anyone else, if you'd like me to. But I'm just reading what the words of the statute say.
Discussion?
Yes, question, please.
Yes, sir.
So, they would, those municipalities can choose not to have ABC permits in the municipalities?
They have not voted on it to date.
Okay.
If you pass this, I believe that the sale of mixed beverages would be allowed in those municipalities.
Commissioner Linville?
Well, that's, that's one of the things about being able to give thought to matters ahead of time, because there's some things always, can be things that might come about. Well, what, the county's authority in this situation is Walkertown and Tobacaville, the only ones that don't have the mixed drink authority now. Other towns, the towns.
Only the four that I've mentioned have passed it. I would presume that High Point has. High Point has very little footprint in Forsyth County. I don't know about places like King. But the only four that I know that have passed it are the four that I mentioned, Winston-Salem, Cornerusville, Lewisville, and Clemens.
So, it'd be King, Bethania, Tobacaville, Rule Hall, Walkertown. There's nine. Well, the county's authority would, this is the question, would the county's authority override those towns in the, if they, if it was something that they didn't want to do without voting on it themselves, would this action over, if they didn't want it, one or all of them, the ones that don't have it, would this action override those towns' authority? Or you're saying it would. My interpretation is that.
The statute says that the county board of commissioners may, by resolution, approve the sale of mixed beverages throughout the county. So, I read that to be the entire county. Again, I'd be happy to follow up, if you'd like me to.
Mr. Chairman, in light of that, I'm not comfortable making that decision for elected folks in these municipalities. So, I would not be in favor of this motion.
Well, it's...
Or this resolution.
Is, is there a way, I understand it, where this is a last day, we'll be together for a while. That's, that's dilemma for me had, I was trying to think through a thousand things as I was speaking earlier in a session when I was disturbed, to say the least. Trying to think of all of the things it might be, had I realized that, I probably would have been a no vote then, because the unincorporated area, I could go with that. If I knew what the other towns that don't have it, if I knew what their intentions were and wanted to do, then I could still make some decision, because I'd have, I'd have information, we all would. That, what you speak of following up, Mr. Attorney, what, while this is going on, is, is about July the 4th. So, someone can do something that they can't do now lawfully. So, what kind of follow-up could you do that would help? Do you know what the other towns want to do that don't have it?
No, I don't. And I had not prepared this item for today, so I apologize for that.
You don't need to apologize.
The follow-up would be to confer with the ABC folks to confirm. I think the language is pretty clear, but it would be good to confirm that.
And to confirm would be, if this action was taken, that those towns that do not have the mixed drinks, that this authority would apply to them?
That's correct.
Was it possible to say, in this resolution, that to, in the last, therefore be resolved, that it only affects the unincorporated areas of the county? If we have the authority to say the county, we could, we should have the authority to say which parts of the county, shouldn't we?
I don't believe, I don't believe you have authority to do that.
Commissioner Mark.
Of course, another thought is that you could do it for 30 days. But our next meeting's on the 29th, which is a little more than 30 days, but 29th of July. Because I don't believe anything will crank up in a month, and I wouldn't say temporary issue. And then, that meets some of my, and I think Commissioner Linville's issue, is that the public would have an opportunity to weigh in on that, about whether there's an issue or not an issue. And it would end on the 31st. That satisfies the July 4th issue with an entity that's already prepared, ready to go, has a liquor license, could actually do that. And then, it gets revisited on July 29th, with an opportunity for public review, public comment, and to find out whatever else we want to find out from our other municipalities, if they have concern about it. So, we'd have a chance to have a five-week period, basically, to look at that, and just enact this temporarily for, till that time.
If... I don't believe you have authority to do that.
If, the only thing that I can, I might think of something else after I go back on the farm and forget I was here today. What I'm trying to think of now is, given benefit of the doubt, Mr. Kaplan, I do that. Also, it's one of the things. Is there any, if there's any possibility to get input from those towns, or whatever input we can, and as the attorney has suggested, and he, I think he is pretty confident on the way he reads the statute, but he still offers to check with the ABC to see if it, as he believes it is, and that being action that we might take now, would those towns that don't have it, it would apply to them. Whatever time we have left, between now and before July the 4th, to get some more input, I'm willing to do that before making the decision. But if we're going to end up having to make one today, and it says, and I think that the attorney is confident that the laws is, as he reads it. And if we're going to be doing something that's going to...
Commissioner Linville.
Put something on towns that they may not want, then I don't want to do that. If they, something they want to do, then they can vote. That's, that's the difficulty I got now, Mr. Kaplan, is that. And if that had come to me when we were here, when we voted earlier today, I probably would have had to no vote. And that was, that's the reason that, it is a reason that all of us needs to know something beforehand, because, and I understand what you've said, it was something that come about quick, but still, that don't relieve that we need to have thought about something, because you can make decisions, and unintended consequences happens quite often. So, with that, if I'm, I'm open for, if the board wants to come back, wants to do a virtual, or whatever, after we get some more information. But if this is what we're faced with, of voting now, and we could be putting something on those towns that, that may not want it, I don't know. I don't want to do that. And so, so that's where I'm at on it. I'm, I'm open to use what time we've got left to get other information.
Commissioner Kaplan. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add that, I hate to do this, but looking at the statutes on the fly, the next statute, 18B 604, says if a majority of voters vote in favor of certain alcoholic beverage sales in a county election, sale of that kind of alcoholic beverage shall be lawful throughout the county, regardless of the vote in any city or township. This would be treated like an election. So, the answer would be that it would be legal in places like Walkertown, if you pass this today.
I think, well, I think perhaps to Commissioner Linville's point, is that we could, we could actually consult with them and ask them if they have problems with that. I mean, if they know that they're problems with it, I guess we could do that. And if there were, then I think we should not, not approve it. And I think if there aren't any problems, I guess we could. Of course, they may say, we don't know whether there's a concern about that, because we haven't asked our folks for input. So, I don't know. But I, I'm with Commissioner Linville. I'd vote no today, if we don't know anymore. But I would entertain the possibility of returning. I'd have a virtual meeting as late as even July the 2nd.
Because as you suggest, consulting with them is probably the, so, the best way to get information. I'm, I'm not trying to block the situation, Mr. Kaplan, but I'm, I don't want to put something, because even in unincorporated areas, probably people that don't agree with it. But plenty do, some don't. But we are their representatives, and we are the town's representatives too. But the, the town or, the county does have authority over them, but I don't want to put something on them that they might not want to do. So, I don't know where to go from here. But I'm, what I'm offering is, I'm willing to take whatever time and whatever information we can gather between now and July the 4th. You just let me know.
Mr. Kaplan.
Well, so, Richard, this is one of the reasons that this came up, was because when you have different jurisdictions for something like this within the county, it's confusing whether you have the right to or right not to. And so, down the street from this vineyard is a distillery called The Williams Distillery, I think that's the name of it, or Old Jack or something.
Old Nick.
Old Nick. Old Nick. Thank you. Which.
Because they came, they came and talked to me, said they have the same problem. They came and talked to me about it.
It's next door and I haven't even been there yet.
They also gave free sanitizer stuff and really worked hard during the pandemic. They were a good, they're a good outfit.
Hey, whatever.
Make good bourbon, too.
The problem was that they thought they had the right because they did just down the street from them, and that's where, and I remember the debate during the legislature about liquor by the drink. By the way, it only passed by one vote in the House when we had it back then. Today, I think would be a solid majority, but at any rate, the confusion of enforcement is the problem for these people. Now, it isn't the whole county, only had one call from one operation, and I was expecting Gordon to tell me, or the attorney Watkins to tell me, that this would affect the incorporated, unincorporated parts of the county, but he has added the other towns, and I, I have to tell you, I'm certain there's going to be some opposition in these towns that haven't already adopted it, otherwise they would have adopted it by now. So if you want to hold this off till we can find out more information, I'm on board with that. I have done what I could do for the folks at West Bend, and if it doesn't pass, you know, it's up to this board to make that decision.
I'm offering you the opportunity, here's what it amounts to. Will, I'm willing to, for someone to consult with the town officials, and whatever that consultation may be, is then we would have to make a decision, or if you want to vote today, we'll vote.
I'll let that be up to the board.
Any further comments?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
To our attorney, the people are trying to get permission to sell alcoholic beverages now, will they lose their permit if we don't take action today, or how does that actually work?
So I, I know, I'll admit, I've actually been to the Old Nick facility, which is very nice. They do have tastings there, and so tastings are allowed at distilleries, so they could do that. What they can't do is sell mixed beverages, a cocktail or something like that, so they wouldn't be able to sell a mixed beverage until. Yeah, you could sell bottles, that's correct.
Well, I think Old Nick is going to ask for spot zoning with Lewisville, and I think Lewisville's indicated they would do it, and I think they've done it by now. I think they're, I think that's, I think that's what's happened. I don't want to speak out of.
You're talking about annexation.
Annexation, what did I say? Annexation, yes. They want it to be spot annexation, not zone, spot annexed, satellite annex, whatever the proper.
Volunteer.
Yeah, satellite is correct, voluntary.
Voluntary satellite annexation, and I think that's, may have happened by now, because that was, I talked to them a couple months ago.
Well, my thought is if Commissioner Linville wants some additional data and information, I don't have a problem with that. I also don't have a, have a problem with making the decision remotely next Tuesday or Wednesday. I would imagine in four or five days, we ought to be able to find out what your, what you and, and your thoughts or surroundings. Frankly, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have to do anything today. That kind of addresses the problem of we're doing it quickly without any conversation, and if we want to wait until Tuesday or Wednesday, you pick the date, and commissioners, you can make your own phone calls, talk to the people in Kernersville, Lewisville, whatever.
If you want an official vote from the boards, that's a month, that's probably a month issue, just because everybody does have a shorter session, you know, meeting schedule in July, so it depends on what you want, you know, if you just want sort of anecdotal comments back from board members, we can certainly, and maybe from those board members, we can probably get that, we could survey them by early.
Well, that's basically what I'm talking. I know you can't, can't force all these communities to do what we want them to do when we want them to do it, but to satisfy the problems, needs, and interests of those who are trying to get more information, this is the only thing I can think of that would be appropriate. You could talk to, you know, we have ad hoc Tuesday and talk about opening or closing or whatever, and there are opinions based on facts, and I think we can get that, but that's how I feel about it. If, on the other hand, if you, if guys, if y'all want to vote up or down, it's your, your right and your duty to do that, so you tell, tell me what, or all of us what you want to do.
Is there a motion regarding this?
No, sir, not right now. I would suggest we at least give the opportunity to Commissioner Linville to contact the communities that he's concerned about, and it's right here in this declaration that we have, and then we can do it remotely. We don't have to drive back and forth and make all kinds of problems that don't exist right now, but as long as there is some question about what we're trying to do, it's, it's not a bad idea to at least contact them. I know how I would vote on just what we have here, and it's, as I've said before, I'm looking out for, as you say, West End, West End, West Bend, because I think, you know, we're always saying we want to provide jobs, we want to help the people, we've been through, we are still in a pandemic, and problems are being created that we don't have anything to do with, but they don't either, and sometimes it's better to be patient. That's one of my favorite words, Commissioner Linville. You can at least be patient about it, but I think we need to act as well, so that's, and if y'all disagree with what I'm saying, that's your prerogative, but I don't have a problem with that either. The will of the whole board's fine with me, but I think we need to do something, so I don't know what y'all want to do, but I would.
Let me.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Let me just try this and see where it goes. So I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution to approve the sale of mixed beverages throughout the county.
No attachments. Okay, and that would eliminate this problem, this, this resolution immediately, which we, you know, but that's, that's a decision that has to be made. I will tell you right up front, I'll vote for what you just said.
We need, we need a second.
Are you second? I know we don't, but I'm just telling you, when it comes, I'm probably going to go that way.
Second the motion.
All right, motions.
Did you make that as a motion?
I did, and there was a second difference.
All right. Do we understand, repeat the motion one more time.
So the motion is that we approve the resolution presented before us regarding mixed beverages throughout the county of Forsyth.
Period. We have a second by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. All in favor of Commissioner Kaplan's motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So we have a four to three vote against it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did not catch the vote. Do you mind showing, everyone showing their hands?
Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. Three. That's it. Four are against. And we have a closed session coming up, right?
We have, we have another motion on the table.
That's your motion?
Yeah, yeah, we're ready to go. Go ahead.
Okay, well, the other motion is essentially, essentially to prepare by the next meeting schedule some rules of procedure to guide the board's operations.
Nice going.
Which actually, this conversation shows how badly we need that.
That's right. So. Yes, ma'am.
I thought there was a motion on the floor to revisit this on Tuesday on a special meeting.
No, that was just what I said I would do if a motion was made, but I didn't make the motion.
Okay, so since it did fail, is that possible that I can make that motion?
I'm not sure. What do you think, Mr. Attorney? Legally, we've already said no, but she says we may, may want to do it and do it remotely next week.
It's, it's up to the board, is how you proceed on this.
Did you have a pop of notice in time?
We can.
Okay, well, now before we do that, let's deal with.
Yeah, let's stay right here.
Commissioner Martin, if you want to state your motion now, we can go ahead and move forward with that as well.
I'd just like to make a motion that we, that we develop, have some, that the staff would prepare draft meeting bylaws or operational procedures for our meetings that we could review in the next meeting cycle, period.
Second to Commissioner Martin's resolution.
I'll second.
Commissioner Whizen Hunt seconds the motion. All in, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
All in favor of Commissioner Martin's motion to develop some procedural rules and regulations and bring it back to us, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, that's unanimous. Nice going, you did a good job there, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. So Chairman, I want to be very clear in terms of the motion that I would like to make relative to the previous motion that didn't, was not successful. I would like us to revisit, revisit this on Tuesday on a Zoom, and after the information has been secured and brought back, for us to have a vote on this before July the 4th.
Conversations, comments?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Fleming Elamene. Can you get that done by Tuesday, Dudley?
We will make every effort to reach out, just, so the elements that popped in my head were, we'll reach out to all the elected officials in those towns and make sure that they get an email and have a chance to respond back to us individually around that. The other question is, do you want there to be a public session portion of the meeting? Okay, and anything else, clerk?
A time?
Yeah, whenever, at the appropriate time. I presume 2:00 Tuesday.
That's our standard time, 2:00 PM is always popular. So is that satisfactory with you?
I just want to ask one question, sir, as a clerk. Would it, would it make any sense to give it a week from today, give people more time to get information, and then do a Zoom on Thursday?
That was not my.
I know, I mean, I'm just asking that question.
The first.
I'm just asking why Tuesday, why not, why Tuesday instead of Thursday? Just a question.
That would be more practical if that would be a week's time, would give staff more time to.
Commissioner Kaplan, would you weigh, would you weigh in? Okay, thank you.
So you're amending your motion to be Thursday, to, by remote, can, remote. Okay, 2:00 PM, remote, next Thursday. All in favor of Commissioner McDaniel's and Commissioner Fleming Elamene's proposal? Raise your hands. See unanimous vote. Thank you. Now let's go have a drink.
This is called nix.
How about a closed session motion first, unless there's anything else from the board?
Yeah, I can see Wesley Young in the Winston-Salem Journal tomorrow. Let's have a drink.
Yeah, he's had quite a day, so.
We have a closed session, right?
We do. Is there anything else I need to do before I read the closed?
No, sir, we do not.
Need to ask board to consider a motion going into closed session, discuss two matters, consult with the attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which is privileged, is acknowledged pursuant to provision of general statute 143, 31811A3. Since there's another business coming before the board at this meeting, follow the closed session, many will be adjourned.
Commissioner Kaplan makes the motion. Commissioner Whizen Hunt seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.